That was passed unanimously for through the project review committee. It's another granny flat addition process to that the PRC again voted five to one to accept. So if no one has any objections to those two things, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
To accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jane and Anthony, did I see you second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So Tracy, if you want to call roll so we can take that as well.
Yep.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes.
Yes, and we need to, I guess, don't even move the then the agenda to move the treasure report up as well.
I included that in the motion.
Perfect.
I got you correct.
Jane is yes.
Yes.
Jane is yeah.
Kevin is yes.
Newman.
Richard is present.
Hey.
Tom is here, Tom votes yes.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm I'm sorry, having some issues with my audio, I might need to switch. I couldn't hear that part.
Yes. Tracy, your audience are pretty bad on my end. Yeah, it's breaking up a lot.
Yeah.
Tracy, your mic is sounding horrible.
Is that is that better at all?
I talk a little more.
No. Is that better at all? Hello?
That sounds a lot better.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
We matured.
Cool. God. We're having. So.
Um.
Right.
That part.
We haven't moved on to anything else. Did you hear Jenna?
Yeah, I heard that part.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
You she's been on, I think, since we started. She just what didn't have her have her video going.
Yeah, I have my yeah, I don't have my video, I'm sorry.
Okay, cool. And you're you in your forty. George?
Yes, that's fine.
Um, I do have to George. Yeah.
Okay. And when show up yet?
Newman is having trouble to log in, but I just emailed him something, so he hopefully will be here shortly.
Okay, all right, we're good.
Okay.
Time.
Yeah, does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Great, Newman's here. Um, okay.
Oh, George had a couple of minor.
No changes.
George, there are things like add a comma here, take out the word two.
That works. Nice. Awesome. Okay, so without objection, or do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
To accept the minutes as submitted.
Thank you, Jane and Derek, I see a second. Are there any objections to accepting the minutes? All right, awesome. Let's move into community reports. So anyone seeking to make a non-agenda public comment, please do put your name into the chat box while we're going through community reports. And then I will get to you after Craig gives his treasure report. Okay, so I see, we'll go with, do you mind if I do it kind of in inverse order everyone and I'll get to Teddy last? So we can.
Can I mention? For the sake of the applicant Del Monte, the consent agenda was approved and therefore their project is approved by the board. So I just wanted to let them know that, see if you weren't waiting for us, so.
Thank you guys.
It won't be presented. But thanks for showing up.
Yeah. Is that Audrey?
That would be me, Audrey Ruland from Ruland Design Group. And okay, so no presenting tonight, just already went went to vote then?
Right, I'll go ahead. There's, I think, just one more piece of paperwork that I have to submit on DSD send. And I will go ahead and do that and let you know when I've submitted that.
Okay, great. So we can tell the homeowner that it's approved then at this end?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Yeah, thanks for your time, Audrey.
Sure thing.
Okay, Michaela, I see you. So why don't we start? Start with you and please do extend my congratulations to your boss as well.
Thank you, Andrea. And on that note, tonight will be my last OB planning meeting as a field representative for the assembly member. The assembly member is not seeking reelection, as many of you know. So you will have a new assembly member and have a new field representative come January. Um, my report tonight is somewhat state, somewhat county. Many of you have may have seen in the news, although you know, a lot has been focused on the election. Um, the county of San Diego did have a seven point four positivity rate from from the state in terms of COVID cases. And when we're above seven percent, basically, we have two strikes. So this is our first strike. If we're still at or above seven percent next week, second strike, we have to move up to tier one. And so what that means is that a lot of the operations will move outdoors again. So for example, restaurants will be outdoor only, the gyms will be outdoor only. Places of worship, outdoor only retail will go from fifty percent to twenty five percent. Um, so again, it's not, we haven't moved from tier two to tier one. But if we are above a seven percent rating next week, we will be in tier one. And then I just kind of related, last week, Assembly Member Gloria went on a business tour with Denny with OBMA, met with a couple of business owners. And so they did talk about, you know, how the outdoor seating is working, even though, you know, if we have a vaccine in the coming months, will, you know, parishioners still want to sit inside? Do they still want the outdoor seating? And so a lot of businesses brought up in OB. Some businesses are doing it well. It's being patronized well and others aren't. It's kind of an eyesore. So there'll be a kind of a continuous conversation within the next couple of months. But I know that the businesses have been doing as well as they can, given the circumstances. And that's pretty much it for me. I was here as well tonight, so I'll give a letter save update. Thank you again, everybody, for your time tonight and all the meetings prior.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Michaela. Does anyone have any questions for Assembly Member Gloria's office? Okay, we'll bounce over to Miller then. Miller?
Awesome. Hey, guys. Can everyone hear me okay? Awesome. This is B. She says hello. Um, hey, folks, Miller Salton was Senator Atkins' office. Uh, the legislative session ended August thirty first, and I realize I haven't been here since then. So some updates on the legislative front. The governor signed or vetoed all bills by the end of September. So some laws were excited about, number one, the COVID nineteen tenant relief act, which will provide temporary stability and relief for Californians. So legal and financial protections for tenants and small landlords with the goal of keeping Californians house. And I will put a link to more information in the chat. Um, there's also legislation now law that increases protective equipment supplies and cleaning for schools to make sure school districts don't lose expect would not lose expected revenue over COVID related closures. Um, another that allows small businesses to exclude PPP loans from gross income for state taxes. And another that authorizes a hundred million dollar hiring tax credit for small businesses. So it's up to a thousand dollar tax credit per employee hired for businesses with less than a hundred employees. And also have a new law that removes flavored tobacco from our store shelves to protect our children. Um, as always, here to help with state related issues. So unemployment benefits and DMV have been our our big two recently. Um, and just about two weeks ago, um, the state added another four hundred million dollars to funding um, for providing shelter, food, supplies and safety around COVID. Two hundred million dollars of that went to Project Home Key. And that's the program that works with local entities to purchase and rehabilitate hotels and motels um, and convert them into housing for homeless folks. So thirty eight million dollars of funding for Project Home Key has come to San Diego, which has meant two projects, three hundred and thirty six units and four hundred and four people housed. Um, finally, something our office is also excited about is the governor signed an executive order directing the state to require by twenty thirty five, all new cars and passenger trucks sold in California be zero emission vehicles. Um, transportation already accounts for half of our greenhouse gas emissions. And zero emission vehicles are already our second largest global export market. Um, I'll paste some information in the chat and happy to take questions.
Thank you, Miller. Yeah, and it does anyone have any questions for Miller? Um, Michael Copley had a follow up on the numbers about hotels.
True.
Yep. Will you just run through the numbers again?
Oh, yeah. I can also paste the link to more information. Um, thirty eight million dollars to San Diego, two projects, three hundred and thirty six units, four hundred and four people housed.
All right, are are the numbers bigger? Is the county getting additional money as well?
I believe not. Um, I think all the funding has been dealt.
All right.
But it could always be increased. The funding could always be increased and then there could be more room for awards.
Okay, yeah, please do leave that information in the chat then.
Sure.
So we can. And do extend my congratulations to your boss as well.
Thanks.
Will do. Of course. Okay, I actually see Muska. Welcome. She is a representative from the Navy. Are you just here with the Sandag people?
Hi, good evening. I'm just here to update tonight.
Okay, thank you, Muska. Okay, so then we'll hop on to Teddy, who will be our last rep report.
Everyone, can you hear me? Hope everyone's doing well. Exciting week, lots going on. Um, I wanted to highlight a couple of programs that are pretty cool. One is the Connect All Program. It's a partnership through the city of San Diego and the Jacob Center. This is an accelerator program for entrepreneurs and small businesses to help them achieve growth and and succeed as entrepreneurs and business owners. The deadline to apply for the January cohort is on the sixteenth of November. So wanted to highlight that for the entrepreneurs and business owners, you know, that might be interested. I'll paste the link in the chat. Wanted to share that program as it's a deadline that's coming up. Um, the other thing that I've seen, I think the planning board shared this pretty recently, but wanted to remind folks about the Free Tree San Diego Program. This is a program that the city offers to neighbors to plant a free tree, which is pretty cool. Um, and it's free. You do have to maintain and water the tree for a certain amount of time. But it's a good way to help the tree canopy, the urban tree canopy in the city. And and a good way to grow community. So I'll put that in the chat, too. It's a it's a fun thing to do for the community in case any of you are interested. Um, this week, there were no council meetings. There was no city council meetings. Um, but last week there there were and a couple of good items were approved, including coordinated street outreach. This is something that our office, Councilmember Campbell called for in her budget memo originally. Obviously, the budget ended up being more challenging than we had anticipated. But we are excited to see that the coordinated street outreach program will be will be deployed soon. That's going to be a partnership with the city and PATH, people addressing homeless and assisting the homeless, sorry. And they'll be deploying outreach teams alongside existing neighborhood policing teams. So that's not in it. That's in addition to the the perk teams and the hot teams that are trying to reach people that are that are living on the streets. So that is good news that is coming and we're excited about that. Um, as always, I I'd like to talk about short term vacation rentals as this group never fails to remind me that it's a priority for you all. Obviously, December third is the date that we're looking forward to. And that will be the date that the planning commission reviews the proposal with additional details based on the last conversation. So we're looking forward to that. Um, the other thing I wanted to share quickly was just street vendor regulations is something our office has been working on. And you may have noticed a bit of a media blitz late last week on the issue. Um, Councilmember Campbell issued a statement briefly in 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 some of that media, so I'll post a link to that article. But just wanted to echo that we are watching that situation, advocating for action on that and hopeful that we will be able to do that, likely after the transition of the new electives coming in. Um, lastly is complete communities is another big topic that the planning board has weighed in on. The city council will be reviewing that next week, Monday at eleven AM. Um, council member is still reviewing the new edition that came out. A lot of the supplemental information was published, I think, yesterday. And so that'll be heard before council Monday at eleven AM. Happy to take feedback on that. But don't really have specifics to share on the on the proposal as the information just came out and still reviewing it. Um, but we are accepting feedback up until Monday. So if you have thoughts on that, I'm always happy to relay them to the council member. Um, and that's about it. I did want to mention the parking lot time restrictions. I know we'll be discussing it as an agenda item, so I'll wait till then. I'm happy to answer questions if there are any.
Do we have any questions for Teddy not related to parking, which we'll discuss in just a little bit? Yes.
No, I asked Teddy a question.
Um, I just wanted to mention that I was just down at the farmer's market. I think the street vendor COVID Palooza, I think it's been called. I think there's more tents there actually than the farmer's market itself right now. So just for a point of reference.
Kevin Miller?
Yeah, I requested a free tree, but it said it wasn't going on because of COVID. Is it back up?
We heard that it was a planting season now that they are doing them, but.
I mean, it was a few months ago.
Yeah, we we recently heard like within the last couple of weeks that they are doing it. Um, maybe check again with with the or or just apply again. That may have changed, but I'm pretty sure that's that's the reason we had it on our radar.
Awesome, thanks. I'm excited. I think it's awesome.
That'd be awesome.
Michael. Mike, yeah. Tracy, your mic's a little bad again. If you don't mind, I'll I'll. Yeah, um, so Michael Copley asked Teddy, does complete communities allow density in all districts?
Um, it's a it's kind of a broad question and I am I've not been the point person on it. So I really haven't gone through with a fine tooth comb on the proposal. I do know that there are metrics and I know this board has kind of gone through at length um, on the proposal. So maybe someone else might be able to answer that a little bit better. But it is in an effort to encourage development that is aligned with sustainable growth. But obviously, there's 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 doubles in the details.
Thanks. I was gonna give a update on where complete communities is at the end.
Okay.
And I I think, yeah, the FAR for Ocean Beach would still be a little bit over two.
It was reduced significantly is what I do know.
Just significantly, and it's still, I think it's two, two and a half, two point five. Um, but I'll give an update at the end and I'll link everything. So you guys can review it as well. Okay, great. I don't see anyone who had a non-agenda public comment in the chat. Did I miss it? Does anyone? Okay, great. We're gonna roll right on to our representatives from Sandag. We have, oh, let me. Oh, Gia, oh, there Gia, there's Gia. I just didn't see Jack. So Gia's here. Awesome. She is going to give us an update on how the public comment period and how the the public review process will work as Sandag moves through possibly acquiring the half the NavWar site and putting in their proposed transportation hub.
Andrea?
Yes.
Should I do mine first or?
Oh, sorry. Yes, Craig, go for it. Because I do, I think Gia, she unfortunately has a.
Treasurer's treasurer's report. Uh, currently, one thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars and fourteen cents in bank account. You got that?
Yep, good financial standing. Thank you, Craig.
My pleasure.
Um, so Gia, are you there?
Hi, I am here. Um, can you hear me all right?
We can hear you. We just cannot see you.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out. I thought I had it working earlier. Um, I'm gonna try one more time really quickly before I begin, if that's all right.
Yeah, totally. I think we do all enjoy seeing a face.
Yes, it it makes a big difference. I agree. I think it.
You've got a little symbol saying that you've got low bandwidth or.
Yeah.
Thing.
I, right now, everything is frozen on my end, so I'm I do apologize. Please bear with me for one moment longer. I'm going to see if I can maybe close down a few windows to get this to work. Um, normally, this is not an issue for me. Hey, I'm so sorry.
It's okay, Jane. I also have your presentation, I believe, too, just in case.
Uh, you know, I have a suspicion that I might get booted out of the program in just a moment. Um, if that happens, I I'm going to rejoin as soon as I can. So um, again, my apologies for this.
Yeah, no worries. We can actually just move you if that's if it's okay with the board. We can flip the agenda items and we can move into our action item and then come back to you for the information item second.
Um, I'm I'm comfortable with that if the board is while I work this out.
Okay, um, do I have any objections to that motion? Okay, great. Okay, so then we'll jump right into parking. So last month, we did ask the city as and our council office to evaluate a variety of options for the parking lots, one of them being longer closures overnight, the possibility of installing physical barriers to prevent people from parking overnight during those closures. Time limits of four hours in the beach lots, the pier parking lot, the lifeguard station lot, as well as the dog beach lot. We also asked for an evaluation of a hybrid payment system. So you get the first four hours for free and you can possibly buy an additional few hours. So those were all taken to city and and the staff evaluated those requests. And the one that would be the quickest and easiest to implement that we could do, you know, tomorrow would be the four or next week, not literally tomorrow. But it would be the four hour parking limits just in the pier lot. And that's really the lot that the city has control over and the other two lots are are more operated by the coastal commission. So the city, so city staff has said that they could install those overnight. That would be the quickest way. And then going for four hour limits in the lifeguard lot and the dog beach lot would be easier and could happen after we have the four hour time limit in the pier parking lot. And that four hour time limit would exist between eight AM and eight PM. Now, this, they also said this would come with enforcement for the existing overnight closures, which would remain at two hours between the hours of, I think, two AM and four AM. We would have, if we want to pursue longer overnight closures, we do think that would have to get approval from coastal commission. Not that, you know, it would be disapproved. It would just take that extra step in a few more months to get those on the books and to a point where they're enforceable. Um, and again, physical closures and barriers would have to be approved by coastal commission. And we'd also have the money. We'd also have to have the money and the budget to do that as well. Uh, so what we've discussed with staff and what would possibly be, you know, appropriate moving forward is pursuing these in different phases of approach. So see how the four hour parking lot at the pier, four hour time limit at the pier parking lot is working as far as circulation goes, you know, vagrancy in the lot. Uh, and then move on if we continue to to if we see success with that and we want to continue doing that at mult at the other lots. Um, and then we can evaluate whether or not we do need the additional system where you can pay for extra hours in the four lot. Uh, you know, if we need residential parking permits for overnight parking in the neighborhoods. But the first step would be the four hour parking limit. And then the everything else would follow to see if it was actually making an impact on, you know, what we want to see it making an impact for. Teddy, did I seem to do us anything? Do you want to hop in here? Is that?
Yeah, no, that was pretty good. I'll add that we've kind of been pushing for something on this for quite a bit. This almost came up last year, late last year, and then during the pandemic, all of the parking lots were closed. And so there really wasn't a way to assess the need. And there wasn't really a need to do anything since there weren't there weren't being occupied at the time. Once they were planned to reopen and and kind of the months leading up to that, the town council, they kind of pulled the community on this to figure out what would be acceptable um, that would still promote access to the beach, but try to promote some cycling in and out of the parking lots to deter people from staying there all day, blocking other folks from from being able to enjoy the beach, too. So we kind of wanted to have the community input on this to figure out what's acceptable. I think Andrea explained pretty well that the phased approach. I will just add that that, you know, that's more in part to timing issues than than it is what what our office would want. I think that our office sees the issue in whole as being a part of just not just parking access, but also law enforcement and also homeless outreach. And so those are three components of this that we're seeing in Ocean Beach at the parking lot specifically. And and we do see this four hour limit as a good first step. But I just wanted to be clear that our office is definitely going to be following up on additional resources that can address some of the other issues outside of just the parking enforcement. But other than that, yeah, that was on point.
All right, awesome. So let's then start with, so does anyone have any questions for me about what we just discussed? Otherwise, we can just, Derek, yeah?
Yeah, I just had a question. So after the idea is that somebody pulls in, four hours is up, they have to leave the parking lot, period, right? There's no moving to another space. There's no paying to extend the time. That's just, just to have some clarification on what that enforcement is going to entail.
Right, I know for conventional time right now, Teddy, can you speak to whether or not they have to leave the parking lot entirely or just move spots? Like, it would be street, the two-hour parking.
As far as what we've been told from mayor's staff is they're putting the four-hour limit to be able to have some sort of parking enforcement there. From my understanding, outside of having been told otherwise, I would assume that that just means ticketing. And and that would be at least enough to deter people from from staying over the four-hour limit.
But somebody comes to the beach, you know, with their kids or whatever, make sure they got a watch because by four hours, they got to leave that parking lot or go find a space outside of that parking lot. That's just, just to make sure that that's, those are the options for somebody who is not who we're trying to target.
That's pretty accurate. I mean, I, I, I think if you were to, I'm not sure how they would enforce it. I can follow up with exactly how they do the enforcement, if they're chalking tires or if they're keeping track of who's been there or not. But the four-hour thing was kind of come to be as a result of the parking studies that were done that showed that on average, that is the typical amount of time that folks are spending there. There was a certain percentage of of folks who were there for all day, and that was 20 to 30% in one of the lots. The four-hour limit is to kind of cycle folks out. And that's based on some of those studies that show that folks are staying around four hours or less. So it seemed like a reasonable approach for staff to recommend that.
Okay, thanks for the clarification on that.
I got some questions.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna do board first. Michael, I do see your hand, so we'll get through board questions first and then I'll go to public. Thank you.
Does that mean?
Or Kevin, sorry, I just want to
I'm curious if the safe parking lots are and have been in operation this entire time, and if anybody knows sort of the usage on those. I understand that was one of the conditions for enforcing vehicle habitation. I also wanted to mention, I was just over at that lot. There's 13 camper vans inside that small lifeguard tower lot. And the, those parking studies I looked at, you know, the spots, I think it was about 30%, about a third of the spots in that lot, in the pier lot, are occupied all day, or they get there, you know, eight or nine o'clock to find a spot and occupy it all, all day long, probably all night as well. So, yeah, people are definitely abusing it and blocking access to other people. And I also want to make sure that the, the question is addressed about the pier lot supposedly having some 24-hour spots for fishing and how that is going to be considered, or if that just has to go away. I also want to mention, for everyone's sake, I, I contacted Officer Sorillo about this issue and he was supportive of the four-hour time limit idea. He didn't really get into any detail about, you know, how that would help with enforcement or anything like that, but he, he thought that that made sense from his perspective. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. I do think, Teddy, there is a question about the use of the safe parking lot, safe parking lots and the vehicle habitation ordinance. Is that, is that also still being enforced?
So VHO wasn't being enforced when parking wasn't being enforced, and it is now. I do have to confirm about the safe lots, because I know somewhere in operation, but the city did consolidate all of its homeless efforts at the convention center during the pandemic. So I, I don't know how that impacted the the lots. It's a good check-in for me to do to to see how that's going. So I don't have a, a clear answer on on the safe flats exactly. But I do know that the 30% of those, what Kevin's referring to as folks were there all day, was like an indicator that the four-hour limit would would help alleviate some of that stuff.
All right, thanks, Teddy. Do I have any more board questions before we go into discussion? Okay, we'll circle back for discussion. Awesome. Then, Michael, do you have any questions? Comments?
Yeah. Actually, the question was answered. I was just gonna ask about enforcing in the lifeguard lot and the dog beach lot during the trial period of the four-hour parking in the pier lot, but it was all answered. Also, nice to, nice to see everyone and Teddy, nice to see you. Thanks, everyone. You guys are doing great.
Thanks, Michael. Do we have any other non-board comments or questions about four-hour parking? Hi, Nicole. Yep. You're on mute. And if Nicole unmutes herself, if whoever's monitoring Facebook, if you see anything come up, is there any chatter, let me know. Maybe?
If Nicole's microphone's not working, I have a comment.
Okay, yeah.
While we wait for Nicole. Can you hear me? Yeah, hi, my name is Scott Thorpleson. I live within a block of the parking lot at the lifeguard station in Saratoga Park. This is my daughter Avery, and I have another small daughter.
Never mind.
Just pointed out because it seems like this issue has come up because people are concerned with the people in the parking lots. I just want to point out that I see those people every single day and walk past those human beings. I also served on this planning board for about seven years in the time when we were writing the new precise plan. And I just wanted to remind people that it's always been, you know, one of the points of pride for the Ocean Beach community that we are probably the last beach community that doesn't charge for parking, the last beach community in Southern California where people can go and get free parking at the beach and free access to the beach. And I, I would hope that that's being considered and we continue that tradition that we've always fought to uphold here. The city has always tried to suggest that we have paid parking at the beach and we've always fought back against that to provide access to people who otherwise couldn't afford it. So I understand that people are concerned with the people who are there. You know, I, I see those people also, and there is some concern, but it's, it comes back to one of those things that, you know, don't punish the good people. There's plenty of laws on the books at this time that aren't being enforced in those lots. If you want to handle the issues that are happening in those lots, just enforce the current law instead of creating a new law to punish the people who are using those, like family who's coming in the summer and stay for six, seven hours, you know, spend the day at the beach. They're coming from the East County and you want to have a day at the beach, you know, being kicked out or being charged to do that. So anyways, just wanted to remind you guys that we used to fight against charging for parking at the beach and be proud of that and ask that the city enforce the current laws on the books instead of going down the route of making it harder to access the beach. Thanks. Good to see you all. Thanks for volunteering for the board.
Thank you, Scott. Nicole, did you say?
Hi, Andrea, did I, am I?
You're on mute. We can hear you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I just was confirming, is it the lifeguard's lot as well that we get the four-hour limit? I missed that.
So the four-hour time limit is just, it would just start at the pier lot. So the subsequent time limits for the lifeguard station and dog beach would come later. Those would, I think, require approval by coastal, so it would take just a few more months if we just want to continue to pursue a four-hour time limit in those two lots.
Okay. And Scott, I heard your comments and I respect them and I understand about access and I also believe there's a lot of, I know, East County is hard to get to the beach without all your goods, so I understand that, but there are, I hope, other modes one day. And so I support this and I just want to let you guys know that I do, I do sit on the bumability board, for those of you know, for the city of San Diego, and I chair a parking subcommittee. So some of you have attended and this kind of conversation, if it has to go to coastal commission, you know, we can kind of help support it that way as well if you need. So I appreciate you guys' efforts. I really do think it's a it's a way to help solve some of the issues that we are seeing and I will say the vehicle inhabitation is like, that is going to be an issue and there's free parking actually along all in PB and, and there's places all in district too that actually have these issues. So it's a, it's kind of an issue and long-term goal, I would love to see maybe one day allocating a couple of spots for some secure bike parking so that people can go and hang out at the beach for hours and know that their vehicle is going to be there when they get back. So thanks for letting me make the comments.
Yeah, thanks. Do I have any more public comments before we go back to board discussion and evaluate everything? All right, great. Usually I would go around and around. So I'm going to start from the top and I see Anthony first. Anthony, do you have any discussion comments?
No, I'm pleased to hear some incremental process, progress with this and taking in Scott's arguments or considerations about access. I hope that, at the very least, this would keep people from abusing their parking so that other, other folks, you know, it's just limited parking, so we can get, you know, cycle people through. So it sounds like some progress, better nothing, and some, I support what's going on with this. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Craig, I'm gonna move over to you. Do you have any comments, discussion?
I need myself. Yeah, I'd like to see it defined as, say, six months or eight. Some delay of length of time, pilot program for the pier lot with a definite sunset date on the pilot program so that it gets revisited and analyzed at the end of the pilot program time. I think that there's going to be a coastal commission issue with the portion of the lot with the 24-hour parking for the fishermen or the fishers on the pier, because that actually is a municipal fishing pier. And fishing at night is something that, you know, the pier's open all night for people to fish and fish by the night. I see that as an issue with respect to that portion of the lot. That's a logical issue. And to address Scott's concerns, yes, I remember how Ocean Beach used to be. There were another set of practical realities back then that sort of kept things in hand that no longer exist. Sort of extrajudicial law enforcement. So unfortunately, I think we're in a new reality now. I still think six hours would be better than four. But I guess for a pilot project, pier lot only, I could agree with four. I still think a comprehensive solution, which includes a parking district, free nominally priced parking passes along the dismal beach bottle for San Diego city residents and everyone else pays by the hour would be the most logical and comprehensive way to deal with it. But it seems like there's a lot of pushback against doing anything. So those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Craig. I see Jane and Tom next. Now I lost them. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Craig about the idea of making this a pilot project that we do it for a definite period of time and then we evaluate and decide whether we want to continue or we want to increase the hours or we want to abolish it. That's us.
Okay. The two-hour overnight parking ban has been on the books for many years. The enforcement has been pretty spotty sometimes, but but it's actually been on the books for a long time. I have no problem with it. Keeps people from coming and using the Ocean Beach as a resort for a week. With respect to the four hours, I don't know, four hours doesn't sound bad to me. That, that I agree, that I agree with previous speakers that we ought to put this in place for a year or so as a pilot program and then look and see what's going on. This is a reaction to some folks who are using the pier parking lot for a variety of purposes, which many people in the community don't like. So I think that we might try it for a while and see if that, and see if that is an improvement over our situation. We'll see.
Thank you too. I see Andrew next.
Yeah, thanks. So I I want to be respectful of Scott's notes. I really respect that and appreciate that and was kind of there in that process and heard a lot of the community input when we worked on that document, the Community Master Plan. I certainly though echo Craig and Jane's comments and and kind of feel like we need to do a little bit of something and I think this could be it. I I am a little bit hesitant to kind of consider, to, to work and do a temporary model. I feel like I've seen temporary things either stick for no practical reason or no scientific analysis or or not. So sometimes and I don't know why, you know, I don't know if it's because of the political season that these things go into effect, you know, or okay with it becoming permanent? And maybe it's just my concern from what I've seen, but so I would, I would be supportive of doing something incremental that we're at least fine with it being permanent. But I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do a trial program. I think that's great too. And then I, I think somewhere between the hours of four and six are a good, good rule of thumb. I, you know, I think you know, four seems a little short, but you know, I'd be fine somewhere in there. But yeah, I, you know, hopefully we can move forward and I wish the city would do more things in terms of accountability, but and enforcement, but sometimes that doesn't happen and so, you know, we have to sometimes do things a little bit more strict than we would like to otherwise. So thank you.
Thank you. I see Derek next.
So with all respect to the people who are, you know, trying to have people act right, trying to get people to do the right things. I think measures like this, generally what you're doing is you're getting good people caught up by trying to catch the bad actors. I do agree with Scott in that there are already laws on the books, first of all, for overnight parking ban, which aren't being enforced simply because they know that they're not going to get any revenue from the people who they're writing the tickets for. My example of, you've got a camper with some quote-unquote "bad actors" in it, and then you've got a family from East County or wherever. They're gonna write them both tickets. Who's gonna pay that ticket? I'm hesitant to support this simply because the city won't support an overnight ban, but they're eager to enforce a four-hour ban that's going to provide immediate revenue from the good actors. That's my two cents and that's why I would be opposed to this.
Thank you. I see Kevin next.
I, I definitely see this as an access issue. I, I
I hear Scott loud and clear, and I think he he does speak for a lot of people. I would like to see enforcement. I have very little hope of that happening. I have very little hope of a four hour limit actually, you know, having a real effect. When we're not enforcing the laws we have now, you know, the two to four AM, I don't think is being enforced now. Vehicle habitation ordinance is not being enforced now. However, it is an access issue. If people are there all day long, I don't care who they are. If they're there 12 hours a day, that limits access to other people. So. You know, they do studies and we did a parking study and the average user is there for less than four hours. So I don't think it's it's really going to impact very many legitimate beach users. It's there to go and enjoy the beach, not to live in the parking lot. So I think it sort of strikes a balance to have a time limit. I I agree, you know, it should be free. This this time limit is is pretty simple to put in place and try it. You know, I really think we need more overnight enforcement and maybe longer hours overnight. I don't think the coastal commission is going to have a problem with a four hour limit. They have supported those in the past. Now, when you start getting less than that or into a pay system, that's going to be a much bigger barrier with the coastal commission. As far as the fishing, the entire pier lot is not open for overnight 24 hours for fishing. It was never intended to be. There was several spots right next to that blue pump house that were marked for 24 hour parking. And everything else followed the other rule.
That's referring to.
So there's a sign. Yeah, there's a sign there that says, you know, in designated stalls, you know, 24 hour fishing, but none of them are designated as such. As far as the access for people fishing. I don't know that they really have access now. You can't provide them access and then also enforce an overnight thing. If you put in those four or five, three spots back in, guess who's going to take them up? It's going to be people camping in those spots, so they won't have access. So I don't know how you accommodate the people fishing. I mean, to require them to have a fishing pole, there's no license required there. So I don't know how that's accommodatable without opening the entire lot. So I just don't think that's something that can be achieved. I do support the four hour time limit. I think it's a good idea to to have a sunset clause with the. Realization that it may slip away and become a permanent thing. So if you don't support it, at least in some sense of being a permanent thing, you should probably not start right now. I want to add that the. Sir Willow actually mentioned the vehicle habitation ordinance. The signage for that should probably be posted at the entry to these lots. It's not allowed anywhere in Ocean Beach because everywhere in Ocean Beach is within 500 feet of residences. And that includes all of these lots and all of the Dog Beach lot as well. So that I think that should be posted there. I want to add, we, you know, this is absolutely an access issue. I see this as trying to provide equitable access, not. Access to a small number of people that are blocking, effectively blocking other people out. We have people in the pier lot that are selling stuff out of their cars. We have a beach loading zone that is occupied by the cannabis. I mean, it's it's really insane that we can't, you know, enforce some of these laws and we're we're stuck trying to create more laws. There's a lot of stuff going on that should not be. Secure bike parking. Why is it not secure to lock my bike to a post? Because all the parts will get stolen off it. So now I have to pay to keep my bike safe at the beach. I mean, I find this all just insane and it's all a knee jerk reaction to to not having enforcement. However, the I think the four hour is something that is it's reasonable and maybe just maybe it'll give them a little more. Something that they can enforce. So I think it's worth a try and I would at least. I would support that. I don't know about some of these other, you know, pay for parking and this and that. I think that's a I would rather avoid that if at all possible. That's that's.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, I see Newman next. Newman?
I don't know. I think I was pretty persuaded. By some of the board the board's opinions. Again, there are laws in place. That could be enforced. And again, families, especially families from OB. If they don't live close to the beach, they have to lug a bunch of stuff. A lot of them don't have much money. So again, I see both arguments. So. I don't know. I'm going to go with the the board majority because I kind of feel that's where, you know, more expertise is. But I but I'm for both points. So that's my opinion.
Thanks, Newman. Tracy? Have you know, have you changed your mic or? It's in and out. Okay.
Type it out, maybe.
I'm going to go down to Virginia.
Well, thank you. Well, I I would agree that we should try the four hour limit. I think six might be a little too long. And it's it is good idea to have a review date for that. So that we can have a chance to fine tune it and see what really works for our community and what doesn't. But that whether it will work or not really depends on having the enforcement. And it gives the police, should they choose to use it, a tool to pry people out of there when they're just squatters, just taking advantage of a free. Treating it like a free camping site. And. Making it unavailable for other people. So. It's a good, I think it's a good idea to have the four hour limit. And then I would really not be in favor of the. Plan to charge for parking because that's something that, you know, once it goes into effect. It's not going to be removed. It's it's easier to fine tune the number of hours that are allowed for parking, but something like trying out a pay system is never going to be reversed. So. That's about all I have.
Thank you, Virginia. Jenna?
Everyone, yeah, I. I agree with both sides, but I think that. I think that four hours, especially for those who are trying to access the beach and, you know, are going to be burdened by this. This requirement. And I would argue that to sort of fix the problems that we're talking about, the issue is really with enforcement. That's, you know, and in closing the night, the lot overnight. And so I don't know that kind of adding an additional layer that doesn't really get at the heart of the problem is the right approach. And I don't want to limit access to the beach, especially during COVID. And I also think that, you know, we should be considering a more comprehensive approach to parking in OB and that these just one off kind of options don't really make sense on their own. So I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you, Jenna. Richard, I have. Richard is the final board comment than myself. I do have just a couple of follow up things for Teddy as well.
Save me for last, huh? Almost last. I don't like charging to park. I don't like the time limits. I do like the fishermen parking spots. I don't look, I don't like the overnight parkers that I see down by Dog Beach, the livants. I don't like campers in the parking spots anywhere. It seems like it's good that we're trying to find a solution to the beach parking, but at this time. All the parking spots are already being taken by the bars and the restaurants. The parking is obscene right now, and it seems like a really, really bad time to be looking to make it even harder to park. I do agree with Scott's comments very much and Craig's comments as much. But at the end of the day, it's all about enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. We've already got these rules on the books. If they don't enforce it, why are we passing more rules? So that's that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. I do know. That as far as the enforcement perspective goes, the problems that we are seeing, you know, would currently would be enforced by SDPD. I don't believe we have our walking team or the walking team anymore or the two officers that were on foot going around, which is unfortunate because they would be enforcing it. The parking restrictions would be enforced by the parking enforcers, which is it is a subset of SDPD, but it is a separate person with the little freewheel car that comes out. So it would, we already have parking time limit enforcements in Ocean Beach, and it would just be an extension of what already exists and what's being enforced. So I do believe that the four hour time limit would be enforced more so than unfortunately what we already have on the books. I I I definitely want to make sure, like everyone is saying, that we have some sort of metric of what we want to see accomplished from this time limit. Are we are we trying to get, you know, more cars rotated through the business districts so they can come, you know, shop and eat and go to the beach down there? You know, what what metrics are we seeing and how is it going to be working? I Teddy did drop in the comment that they could get the other two lots by the end of the year. And I, if we do pursue any sort of time limit, I guess I would feel more comfortable with just doing the pier lot that we can do now and waiting to see what it is accomplishing, what, you know, what these metrics are that they're hitting and and who the actual movement and what we wanted to see. Is in fact. Consequences of these these enforcement. But I also fear that if we just do it at one parking lot, it's going to push everything down to the far lots. So Teddy, based on what you're hearing, how? How would we, would there be a way we could move forward with a. Incremental approach or what what's what's the possibility of this happening from council's perspective?
Can you clarify? I just want to make sure I'm hearing the question right.
If we want to take an incremental approach, how would council feel about that instead of just saying four hours in every lot? If we wanted to say four hours in one lot to see how it's working, would that, you know, what would we be?
I think that's still fine. I mean, again, this isn't something that I that would go to council. This is something that's administrative. And so our office is really trying to make this as aligned to the community's interests and priorities as much as possible. We're basically trying to take marching orders from from the planning board and from the town council on what what the community thinks is best. So we can definitely support that. If that's what the board wants to do, we'd be happy to advocate for that.
Okay. Kevin?
Reiterate why the other, you mentioned something about coastal or why the other of the lifeguard lot is not on the table or why overnight. More overnight restrictions is not on the table. I guess I don't understand why. Why we can't advocate for that right now for say closing.
I think, yeah, and I mean, our office is is advocating for that. And the mayor's office told us that the procedural sign signage is much easier to do without coastal approval. And basically what we're trying to do with this meeting is have some clear direction from the planning board on on what that looks like, what that. Next approach looks like if that's a closure, I think it was at midnight that was suggested last meeting. Or whether that's a gate closure, the funding for that and who would who would actually close it are all part of the discussion. It's not off the table. But the response we got was that the four hour limit is something that can be done very quickly. And that the mayor's office wanted to gauge the planning board's position on that before doing it, make sure that that's something the community wants. So it's not something that's off the table. Our office is still going to be requesting that, but this meeting is going to help. Reinforce what we're asking for.
Okay, I guess I'll take your word for it. I don't understand why the overnight coastal issue, traditionally, they haven't taken a position against overnight restrictions because beach activity is a is a daytime activity. And I think also the late night stuff is really what's driving a lot of the complaints and the quality of life issues. So I mean, we could still advocate for it and take what we can get. That's my recommendation. I think the overnight expansion of the overnight hour. Ban is. Would be more effective, even if we can't implement it right away.
And this board did request. Last year to look into the possibilities of expanding the overnight closure. I believe, yeah, it was midnight to 5:00 AM at specifically the Dog Beach lot. Obviously, that hasn't happened as well, but I I do. I would tend to hazard the guess that overnight closures and kind of getting that area so it's you're not 100, you can't really camp 24 hours a day and you actually have to go somewhere, you know, for five hours would see a lot of the. These issues that we're having go down. It is unfortunate unfortunate that we're hearing it's, you know, not the quickest thing to do. But at the end, it does all come down to enforcement and what is actually, you know, going to make something happen, some change happen. I think we all want to see some something change. Right? Or.
Well, you bring up a great point with the parking meters, the parking meter maids. They are a different division. They're they're cheaper, they're plentiful, apparently. And they work during the daytime. Unfortunately, what we're going to end up with potentially is people without enforcement overnight and only enforcement during the day, which is kind of backwards. But. I wanted to just second that idea of on the, you know, the meter maids can be effective even when SDPD otherwise has not been.
I think Craig, were you trying to speak? I think you got remuted. Okay. Have people also been paying attention to the chat? There are a few comments coming in from the community as well about overnight closures. And the pier lots. Let me go back.
There we go. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, this is anecdotal, but I've heard that part of the reason that. Parking enforcement's one of any fee is the tow companies won't actually be down. For lack of a better word, toll vehicles, because they know these people have no money to get their cars out of the lot. And it ends up being a money losing proposition for the tow companies because they end up with a vehicle that's basically old and beat up, not worth anything. They can't sell it for any value and it just sits there and it's a drain on them financially. So. There's a lot of. Practical, I guess, real world things out there that make this, you know, difficult. I'm feeling pretty damned hopeless.
Thank you, Craig. So I mean, I. Guess I didn't. This leaves us too much. We still hung up on enforcement thing. What?
You're breaking up, Andrea. You're breaking up.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So then what is the pulse on the matter after hearing all these things? I I know there's a lot of movement in play, but I also feel as though we can't continue to ask for the same enforcement we've been asking throughout this entire pandemic. If we've seen anything, I think it's really been a lack of a will to help out with these kind of quality of life problems. You know, I do hope, and it was great to hear about the new outreach team. And I hope that we can get street patrol back with that, the city and the PATH outreach team daily, making contacts with all of the, with everyone. But is, I mean, is that what we want to wait? Do, are we continuing, going to continue to wait for this when, you know, a lot of the community, we had, there was almost 100 respondents back to the town council, I think, saying that they would be interested in pursuing some kind of timed, non-paid parking limit on the lots. And the OB Main Street is interested in it since they've lost a lot of their on-street parking. And they do need, and they, they, you don't spend as much time at the beach as you do at the businesses. So it would benefit them and help them out greatly if we did have a little more circulation in the lots that were closest, that aren't just paid lots. Because that's the only option for people who just want to come for a couple of hours right now, since most of our on-street parking is taken up. It's hard. I know it's a hard balance, but I don't want to do, I personally don't want to do nothing. But we do need a motion from the board of what we want to pursue. But I sense there is more discussion to be had, and we definitely have the time to do it. Does anyone else want to jump in here?
Maybe we're ready for a motion, so we can give Teddy something to bring back.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't, it sounded like there were a couple of dissenters, but the majority was in support of it. So I say rock the vote.
Okay. Then do I have?
I'll take a stab at it. I move that we recommend to, the board recommends to approve of a four-hour overnight parking limit for, to begin with, for the pier parking lot.
Is that a four-hour and an overnight parking limit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that. I recommend that we make a motion to approve a four-hour limit on a trial basis for the pier parking lot.
Tracy, you were shaking your head. I know you popped something in. Are you just not? It's a little bit better. Continue.
It just sounds like the connection is cutting in and out every half a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like your network more so than just audio.
You can try calling it on your phone. That's what I'm using.
With Anthony's motion, I would like to see a definite time limit, either six months, nine months.
Right. Yeah, a definite time limit with, yeah, then thinking of the possibility of extending it or removing the time limit. I guess that would be the option for both, to the other lots versus removing it.
I think if we put a definite time limit on it, then we have a chance to evaluate whether it's working or it's not working.
Yeah. And also for it to actually be in place, I think once, I mean, we have heard a lot of community, but obviously, we'll hear more once it's in place. So I agree as well. Craig suggested, oh, my 30th birthday. Sunset, that'll be a date I'll remember.
I'd be willing to accept a friendly motion by what Craig said, as well as extending the limit a little bit longer on my initial motion. So I'm happy to accept a friendly amendment and those.
Okay, great. All right, so motion for, and we're just talking about the pier parking lot, correct? We do want to make sure we have longer times at other parking lots. Okay.
So now we're six hours versus four. Pier lot only and sunsets on September 30th of 2021?
Is that six hours instead of four?
Yes, that's, I, I think six hours. I just think four is too short for families that are going to go to the beach.
Okay. Well, if it is just in one lot, then the dog beach lot would still be open with no time restriction.
Why are we skipping five hours?
But I asked that question too, and we don't, I guess they don't like.
No, if you want, I don't care. Actually, I could probably go for five. Want to make it five?
So thinking about the math here, if we start at 8:00 AM and it ends at 8:00 PM, if someone, yeah, if someone parks there at 3:00, then they would be able to sit there for the rest of the day. So that's what we'd be saying with that time limit.
Let me reply after, and why wouldn't it apply all day and all night? I feel like we're just, we're now creating a law that only applies to to people during the day and not even to people in campers, per what Craig was saying. And we're getting far, far away from what we're trying to accomplish here. And we're applying this to a very small subset of people now. I would say it should have, just leave the sign up, let it apply. If they don't enforce it, whatever, but I would support a four-hour. I think we're getting, we're getting away from something that's enforceable. And then employees are going to start using it. I would also, can I also, I want to offer an amendment, a friendly amendment if Anthony will accept, to add to the end of his motion with the goal of creating more turnover and providing more equitable beach access.
I wholeheartedly accept that philosophy, yes.
The other stuff I'm cool with.
Hey, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm on my phone, so I'm not going to be able to copy stuff out of the chat or anything because I'm on a completely different system now. So somebody's going to have to, somebody's going to have to take over some secretary duties for now. Unless anybody, unless people want to talk really slow while I type out motions.
No, it's okay. I can copy the motions for you, Tracy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, wonderful. That, and that leaves us, where are we now? Let me see, Anthony.
Anthony needs to read us the motion.
Yeah, and type it in.
I have no idea what the hell the motion is anymore. Let me start again. The motion was to, there's so many in different, the motion was to recommend that the, for a six-month trial period ending on September 30th, 2021. No, that's not a six month, a year. Let me start over again. I moved that we recommend that the pier parking lot be restricted daily for parking to six hours beginning at, and terminate, this program evaluated through September 30th, 2021. Is that the, does that sound like the basic?
Yeah, but add in there in order to increase turnover and to have beach access.
Right.
Can I give a shot?
Please. Yeah, save my sanity, please.
The motion is to recommend six, are we at six now? I don't like six, but to recommend six-hour time limits in the pier parking lot for a trial period to sunset on September 30th, 2021 with the goal of increasing turnover in the lot and providing equitable beach access.
Sounds right to me.
Although I still like four hours.
I, yeah, I.
We can vote on.
Four, I mean, four hours is the average, and this is only one lot.
We can vote on the four-hour portion.
Separately.
Amendment before we vote on the full deal.
Right.
Not everything has to be a friendly amendment.
Okay, then we should vote on whether we want four.
Four. Four. Yeah. Why don't we vote with four hours and then see if it passes? And then if not, we'll go to six hours.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Did you type, Kevin? Are you officially making that motion? Will you type it?
No. No. I'm not making that motion.
Anthony?
I support the four hour.
Well, I.
I actually got it.
All right. I just want everyone to see it typed out, so there's no confusion. And we'll see if someone wants to second that.
Did it go to four hours or six hours?
It's at four.
Is it four now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I can't, I can't type it out, but I can read it out.
Okay, and I can type it. I'll try.
So recommend four-hour time limit in pier lot for a trial period to sunset on September 30th, 2021 with the goal of increasing turnover in the lot and providing equitable beach access.
Yeah.
I second that. Wait, is that my question? I guess it's mine.
Yes, Anthony. So everyone take a moment to read that. I just popped it into the chat. Okay, great. And we have a second, Kevin's second. So Tracy, if you would like to call the roll.
You guys can hear me. All right. Anthony?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Craig?
No.
Derek?
No.
Dane? Jenna? Jenna?
I said no. Can you hear me?
Okay, I got you now. No.
Okay.
Kevin?
Yes.
Newman?
Looks like he kicked out.
Oh. He did tell me he had a meeting at 7:15.
Okay, Richard?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Virginia?
Yes.
And although, although yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, eight to four, motion passes.
Yeah. Okay, Teddy. I also want to make the request that with this, this will obviously require a new signage. When this signage goes in, can we also update the signage on overnight vehicle habitation and large trucks in lots? Or oversized vehicles in these lots as well? Because we don't have the updated signage for that either.
And the vehicle habitation applies 24/7. Not just the nighttime thing.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, if that's what the board wants to do, yeah, let's, I mean, what I would say is if the board can put that motion into a quick letter for us and that our office can file that with the town council's desires for this, we can approach the mayor's staff with that, and that's how your input will be.
Thank you, Teddy. And we'll obviously continue to keep discussing this and working with your office. Or obviously, like you said, there's a lot of problems that we think can be addressed with other enforcement. So hopefully, when that new PATH program gets launched, we can definitely work hand in hand to get a lot of those resources into Ocean Beach. All right, awesome. And Gia, thank you for waiting so patiently. Again, Gia works with Sandag, and she is here to present about how the public input process is going to work moving forward with the proposed transportation hub so that we can make sure, you know, all of our regional transportation desires get fulfilled. Take it away, Gia.
Great, thank you so much. And I do appreciate, or I apologize once again for the technical issues earlier. Hopefully, everything is working now. So as Andrea mentioned, my name is Gia Ballish. I'm part of the communication team at Sandag. So I am going to share my screen in the hope that this presentation will show fully. It working? And so what? How about now? Can you see it full screen? Hopefully, yes. Okay, so to begin, you know, as Andrea said, and thank you for the kind introduction. You know, I am here today to speak about the Central Mobility Hub. We'll be telling you a bit about what that is and what that means. But first, I thought it might be helpful to give a brief overview about Sandag. This is my first time meeting with your group, so thank you for having me. I'm not sure how, you know, how often you may work with other Sandag representatives. But, you know, just so you are aware, we are the San Diego Association of Governments. We are a metropolitan planning organization and a forum for regional decision-making in the San Diego region. So we are governed by a board of directors that is comprised of local elected leaders from all of San Diego's 19 local governments. And we work with our board. We have a team of, you know, expert staff, and we also work closely with partner agencies, especially MTS, Caltrans, NCTD, City of San Diego, of course, other cities and local governments to really think about the ways that we want the San Diego region to grow, not just in terms of transportation, but also looking at quality of life issues like housing and economics. So a few of our current priority projects are listed for you here. Just to give you a quick overview of each, Otay Mesa East concerns the Otay Mesa Port of Entry at the US Mexico border. So we are making improvements there to improve travel times and also, you know, thereby improve trade and other, you know, international relations issues there. The Delmar Bluffs and Los San Corridor, we are in the process of stabilizing the bluffs. As I'm sure you've heard, there are issues with corrosion currently. So we are working hard to ensure that those bluffs are stable and the railway that runs along them is able to travel safely. The Mid Coast Trolley Project is one of the region's largest infrastructure projects in. The Mid Coast Trolley Project is one of the region's largest, uh, infrastructure projects in, in our history, actually. This is going to extend the Blue Line Trolley Service from downtown San Diego north to the university committee, community. Uh, so once it is completed, um, which is scheduled for, uh, late twenty twenty-one, there will be a, you know, one-seat ride offered all the way from the border up to UC San Diego and UTC area. So, you know, really improving regional transportation. Uh, then you have our, our regional plan. So this is, you know, really kind of the, the grandest of the projects. Uh, we complete a regional plan every four years to visualize ways that we see the region growing and ways that we can, um, improve transportation and, you know, again, really work on those quality of life issues. Uh, part of this upcoming regional plan, which we anticipate to be, um, approved and finalized in late twenty twenty-one, focuses on mobility hubs, uh, which are areas of mobility and activity that can really be hubs for transportation throughout the region, and I'll, I'll go into a bit more about this. Um, but the central mobility hub is one of the hubs that we envision through this plan. Um, and really, it is a fundamental objective of the regional plan. So this central mobility hub is, is sort of, um, you know, it's a rather large part of what we envision for regional transportation moving forward. So, you know, in terms of, you know, what is a central mobility hub? So we envision that this hub in particular would be a multimodal transit center that would serve all current and future transportation. So this would be a way to connect the current trolley system, buses, um, you know, Pacific Surf liner, the Amtrak, you know, every mode of transportation that we currently have, as well as any sort of anticipated modes of travel that should come into the region. Um, so it, by doing so, not only will it improve regional connectivity, but we're hoping to locate this hub in an area that allows for a potential direct connection to San Diego International Airport. So this has been a, a priority of Sandag's for some time, is solving that longstanding challenge of connectivity to the airport, uh, specifically transit connectivity. So through this project, we hope to be able to provide a solution to that issue. Uh, the central mobility hub would also serve as a, a community space. Uh, we envision that this could be a place with office space, retail space, recreation areas, um, and of course be a, a clean, safe space for the community. Now, a little bit of background, so I mentioned that part of this hub that we envision is air, you know, an airport connection. Uh, so back in fall of twenty eighteen, the Sandag Board of Directors, um, they convened this group that they henceforth called the Airport Connectivity Subcommittee, and they tasked them with developing solutions to that challenge. So, you know, really trying to come up with solutions to improve connectivity to San Diego International Airport. Um, I think, you know, we are all familiar with the congestion in that area, the fact that, you know, we do have a rather small airport for such a large city, so, you know, connections to and from and transportation to and from can be a challenge. Uh, so that committee worked for nine months to develop four concepts for what they thought would be solutions to this dilemma. And I'll go through those with you momentarily. Uh, but they presented those to the board in a fall of twenty nineteen. Now, around that same time, we signed our first, um, agreement with the Navy to work with them in their Navy Old Town Campus Revitalization Project. So I'm sure that you've heard of this, I know Muska is in attendance today, and I'm sure she's brought this to the group in the past. Um, I'm going to go into more detail with regard to our role in that project. Um, but just know that, you know, in terms of the timeline for this central mobility hub, you know, we, uh, responded to the Navy's request for interest in twenty eighteen, signed our agreement with them in fall of twenty nineteen, and our, our relationship is ongoing. Uh, now, as of March of this past year, we also signed a memorandum of understanding with the City of San Diego, the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority, and the Port of San Diego, uh, to allow us to work together on regional projects like this airport connectivity issue. So ultimately, this is allowing us to share information, um, it certainly alleviates a lot of challenges when it comes to right-of-way access, um, and really allows us to collaborate on, you know, airport connectivity issues surrounding roadways, um, but also, you know, anything that involves the Portmaster Plan or the airport's expansion. So it's really an agreement for all of us to work together, um, for the, the betterment of the region. Now, I mentioned that the airport subcommittee came up with four concepts. So here are those initial concepts here. Um, so the first two, as you can see, they suggested that we build this multimodal transit center, this central mobility hub, as we've pointed, at the Navy's Old Town Campus. Uh, so, you know, as you know, the Navy Old Town Campus is the current home to NavWar, so, you know, very close to your community um, and very close to the airport, which made this a, a prime option when we were considering concepts. So by locating the central mobility hub at that Navy OTC site, um, the group envisioned that we could have two possible modes of direct access to the airport. One being a, a tunnel underground, uh, directly to the airport about one mile in length, and the other being about three and a half miles of above-ground, um, you know, an automatic people move mover. So, you know, a, a bit more of a roundabout connection, but still very quick, very efficient, um, and, you know, a transit connection that is necessary. Now, the other, uh, concept that looked at this central mobility hub looked at another site, uh, which we call the Intermodal Transit Center. This is a site that we considered in the past when looking at building this, um, central mobility hub. So this is not a new concept for us, um, but right now, you know, the project is really moving forward. We feel like this is the best time for us to really pursue this. Uh, but that Intermodal Transit Center site is, is nearby, it's just a little further off. Um, it is, oh, not further off necessarily, just in a different location. Um, but it is just south of Washington Street in between the I-five freeway and Pacific Highway. Um, it's smaller, the Navy OTC site is a little over seventy acres. This ITC site, Intermodal Transit Center, is about thirteen acres. So this is a, another potential concept with an above-ground people mover that would connect to the airport. And then lastly was, you know, an extension of the current trolley system, so providing a direct trolley connection to the airport. The Navy, their campus renovation project. The reason this is significant to our conversation is because as you can see through these. Should in, for our central mobility. So as I mentioned, we have, um, partnered with the Navy. What that partnership actually means is that we are collaborating with the Navy to explore possible redevelopment opportunities for this, uh, property here. So we aren't just looking at the central mobility hub, we're working with the Navy to see, um, you know, ways that this site could be redeveloped for the community to include office space, housing, recreation areas. Um, of course, the ultimate priority is creating new NavWar facilities. So the Navy is in need of modernizing those, you know, very outdated facilities that are critical to their mission. So we are working with them to support this redevelopment. Um, even if the central mobility hub is not located here, Sandag is still going to, you know, work with the Navy to ensure that, you know, all redevelopment is, is smooth, you know, we, we provide those services, we are transportation experts at Sandag. So in terms of access to and from the site and any other improvements that may be necessary in the area, um, you know, that's where we're really going to come into play. Um, but right now, you know, we are considering the opportunity to have this central mobility hub at this location. Uh, so the Navy is currently in the midst of their environmental review process for their project. And through that process, they are looking at five different alternatives for that seventy-acre site. Two of the five include a potential transit center. So if the community ultimately decides, and if the environmental, um, review process ultimately decides that that's one of the best options to consider, um, then that would mean that we could move forward in, you know, planning for a central mobility hub to be included at this site. Um, we are serving as a cooperating agency as the Navy develops their environmental impact statement through NEPA. Um, we, for our project, are going to conduct, um, independent additional environmental analysis through the SEQA process. So we are going to abide by the California Environmental Quality Act, whereas the Navy, of course, um, is subject to the National Environmental Policy Act. And I've included the Navy's project website here, just so you can gather more information. Um, but I do hope this, you know, provides a bit of information in terms, or a bit of clarity in terms of how Sandag's, um, our role in the Navy's project and what this could mean for the central mobility hub that we envision. Now, concurrent to this effort with the Navy, Sandag is also working on what are known as comprehensive multimodal corridor plans. So these are plans that we conduct every five years or so, um, to improve frequently-traveled transportation corridors throughout the region. Um, completing these plans is oftentimes necessary for us to qualify for different federal, state, and local funding. So right now, we are, uh, we plan to complete twelve of these comprehensive multimodal corridor plans by twenty twenty-five. We've prioritized five corridors, um, and through those corridors, you know, we hope to find transportation solutions to improve travel in the area, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, um, and provide more mobility options. So not just vehicular, but also, you know, pedestrian access, bicycle access, really making San Diego, um, you know, even though it's already a really wonderful place to live, making it even more livable and really enhancing quality of life through transportation options. Um, one of these corridors that we are going to be planning transportation solutions for um, is in the area of the proposed central mobility hub. So we're actually calling it the Central Mobility Hub and Connections, CMCP. Um, again, Comprehensive Multimodal Corridor Plan. And this map shows you where that study area is going to be. So through this CMCP process, we are going to be developing transportation solutions primarily for that dark blue area. So that is the study area. The lighter blue area, including Ocean Beach, is what we consider an area of influence, meaning that the study area could impact those communities and vice versa. So when we are conducting this CMCP planning process, we are going to look at each community's individual community plan updates, we're going to be looking at other projects in the areas. Um, so for example, I know this project, specifically this CMCP, is already, you know, becoming very well-versed with the sports arena redevelopment, uh, the Midway Community Plan, the Central Mobility Hub project, of course, because these are all things that are going to impact this area. And ultimately, they are going to be devising solutions to really improve transportation and livability throughout. Now, I know I've mentioned quite a few different projects, so just, you know, to explain how this all works together. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, the regional plan, this is something Sandag develops every four years. It's our vision for the future of the region. This comprehensive multimodal corridor plan that I just explained, you know, again, we're going to be looking at various corridors throughout the region. These can impact the regional plan and vice versa, because ultimately, what they're working together to do is improve transportation throughout the region, and again, overall quality of life as a result. Now, we also have these simultaneous efforts at Sandag to improve airport connectivity and to support the Navy in their revitalization project. And you can see the central mobility hub is really a, a piece of all of these projects. So even though they seem rather independent of one another, the central, central mobility hub, you know, may be located at the Navy OTC revital, excuse me, the Navy OTC site. It may form a direct connection to the airport, which is something that the community could really use. And of course, it is going to be part of both the regional plan and CMCP processes. Now, in terms of timelines and where we're at now, it's important to note that, you know, we are still very much in the infancy of this project. So at this stage, you know, we've conducted that initial airport connectivity analysis through which we developed potential concepts for improving airport connectivity. That's where the, the central mobility hub comes into play is through those concepts. Uh, we've created or, um, established these wonderful working relationships with partners. So the Navy, as well as, as I mentioned earlier, the City of San Diego, the port, and the airport. And then, you know, those relationships are going to move forward throughout this process. Um, just to give you an idea in terms of timeline, right now, we are beginning the development of that comprehensive multimodal corridor plan. So you're going to be hearing more about that soon. We actually hope to hold a public workshop this December or January, where you're going to be able to see what this plan is beginning to look at. So at those workshops is where, you know, we want the public's input, we want your input on what your priorities are for that study area and for your community and how it may be impacted, um, what concerns you have, you know, what you want us to take into consideration during this planning process. Then in the springtime, there will be a second workshop where we'll actually present what that comprehensive multimodal corridor plan looks like, and we'll get your feedback then as well, so that you can really see what it is we envision for these areas. Now, with regard to the central mobility hub project itself, our environmental review process for that project is slated to begin in spring of twenty twenty-one. So the Navy is currently completing their own environmental process for their Navy OTC site. Our environmental review process will come a bit later. Um, and it, it really will depend on, you know, the alternative that the Navy selects, um, as well as the outcome of that CMCP study. So that's where, you know, I really encourage you to get involved in the CMCP workshops, because those discussions are ultimately going to impact that larger central mobility hub project. It's going to directly influence it. Um, and of course, there are going to be additional opportunities for public involvement, um, as we move through this process. So throughout the environmental review process, we are going to offer opportunities for public meetings, public workshops. And we're going to want you to, you know, look at our environmental review process and really weigh in. Um, and then when we do ultimately take this to our board of directors for approval and begin working on a final design, um, you know, there are still going to be opportunities for us to engage with you all throughout that process. Like I said, we're, you know, really at the, the start of this project, and this is something that could go on for a very long time. So, um, you know, I'm here today to really start building that bridge, um, and to let you know that we want to hear from you during this process, um, but it is going to, um, you know, only grow from here. And then really just to, to recap what I just went over, um, you know, you can see here a bit more about the timeline moving forward, you know, we expect to begin our environmental process in spring. Um, there are going to be opportunities for you to be involved through, um, that process and even beforehand through the CMCP study. So again, I really encourage you, you know, we'll be in touch, I'll, I'll be letting you know about when those workshops are scheduled, when you can take part. Um, but for now, just kind of, you know, keep an ear to the ground, know that these, these things are happening around you. Um, and we at Sandag really want to hear from the communities, because ultimately, you know, your voice is going to impact what it is that we design. And with that, um, I, I turn it over for any questions that you may have, and I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Gia. Uh, I will just say, so at, once the CMCP studies are finalized, would you guys then, uh, come back and present those as well?
We absolutely can. Uh, so, you know, the CMCPs, they, they have begun, um, you know, they started a few months back, um, but they're really just kind of starting to hit the ground running as well. So it's a very condensed timeline for that study process. Uh, so you'll be hearing more from them in the, the weeks and months to come, absolutely. Um, I will, I will say, I, I forgot to mention this, but in that study, they are going to be considering three concepts. So they're going to be looking at, you know, coming up with transportation. Study area, two of their concepts are going to consider the central mobility hub at the Navy site, and one is going to consider it at that Intermodal Transit Center site that I, I spoke to. Um, but again, this. Um, but again, this study is much more about the surrounding areas. Um, so they are going to look at what this central mobility hub could look like, what services it could provide. Um, but they're also going to be looking at roadway connections and ways that we can, you know, again, promote walkability, bikeability throughout that area.
Great. Yeah, that's all, all the things we're looking forward to. Do I have any public questions for you yet? Sorry, I'm not. Oh, I can't see everyone, uh huh, because you're still sharing your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can.
No, it's all right. I didn't think about that until I just said it. Yeah. There we go.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. Public, public question.
All right, perfect. There we go. I can see everyone. Um, do we have any public comments? Uh, okay, yeah, uh, then I will go ahead. I think I saw Anthony and Kevin. Um, so Anthony, I'll go with you first, and then Kevin, you can jump in once Anthony's done.
Thank you. Thanks, you for the great presentation. Um, uh, I have several questions, but I'm going to ask you just a few softball ones. For the sake of time, um, I'm gonna throw some over there to you. Um, I, in addition to being a, a beach community resident, I'm also, well, prior to COVID, I was a business commuter traveler using the airport at least three times a month. So I recognize, I, I always envisioned being able to just hop on a bus or a trolley to get to the airport, rather than taking Uber or drive there, you know, keep a car off. So I saw that the, 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 the surrounding beach communities specifically were in light blue rather than dark blue there in, influential area. Are there any plans or has, had there been any considerations, one, of including some kind of intermodal transport to the airport from Mission Beach, from PB, from OB, you know, there, uh, to alleviate, you know, street traffic and individuals using cars?
So I will say, this is, it kind of gets into the larger plans of Sandag's. So using the midcoast trolley, for example, um, using it as an example. So we're currently working on extending the trolley's blue line through the Marina Corridor. So it's going to provide a trolley connection to Mission Bay area, um, not directly to the beaches per se, but it is going to have a stop at the Balboa Garnet um interchange. So, you know, there are going to be ways for, and it's going to go all the way north, like I said, to UC San Diego and the UTC area along Genesee. So there are going to be improved connections very soon. That project is going to wrap up by the end of 2021. So at that point, you know, it, it's not going to solve everything necessarily, but just as an example, from, you know, Pacific Beach, you could consider a, a bus to the trolley station, the trolley down, and then ultimately, we want this central mobility hub to be where all of those points would converge. Um, but in terms of, you know, direct access from the other beach communities like your own, I can, I can certainly take note of that at least, so that we know moving forward, it's a priority of the communities.
Yeah, like even an express bus from the, somewhere in Ocean Beach to the airport would be great. The other question I had was, um, uh, I, the numbers you're using and, and the data you're using, I'm assuming is pre-COVID, have, um, have considerations been made? Uh, are these, the assumptions that you put in your presentation are assuming that transportation and economic activity goes back, bounces back to pre-COVID times?
It's, I think we're in the process of reviewing, for, you know, um, in terms of modeling, that's, that's not my area of expertise. I don't want to speak to it and, and say anything incorrectly. Um, but I, I do know it's, it's a under consideration right now. Um, and I can get back to you with more information on that if that would be helpful.
Great. My final question is, um, is I, I saw a presentation of several weeks ago, um, one of the most, most of transportation that was going to be expanded was, um, like, you know, bike corridors throughout the state, the city. Is, is that one of the intermodal modes of transportation being considered to the, to the hub as well?
So through the CMCP, that study, they are looking at ways to improve bicycle and pedestrian access throughout the study area. So I can't yet speak to whether those, you know, there will be connections to current paths or paths that are planned. Um, but the, the bike program is a, a priority of Sandag's. I didn't include it in this presentation, but we have many bike projects currently underway. Um, so, you know, the goal is that, y- yes, it will be incorporated into the hub in some capacity. I just can't speak to what the direct connections might be at this stage. They just haven't been determined. So part of this study will, will work on that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, you want to hop in and ask your question?
My own. Sorry, some technical difficulties.
If you want me to come back, Virginia.
I'll jump in then if Kevin's not ready.
Uh, Virginia had her hand up.
Thank you.
Yeah, Virginia. Yeah, no worries. She just needs to unmute.
Yeah. I, um, wanted to mention, when you, Anthony reminded me that there are express, similar express bus in Temecula on the bus stop signs at certain areas. They offer the option that a person can call to be picked up and taken where they want to go, rather than, um, having the city run of a regularly scheduled bus, because there weren't any riders apparently, but maybe something like that would work here. When someone wants to reach the airport, they could call and be picked up through the transit system.
Thank you. I, I've taken note of that.
All right, Derek.
Uh, yeah, just to kind of echo Anthony's experience, I worked at UCSD for five years up in La Jolla. And, uh, you know, for the first several months, I relied on public transportation as a necessity. I didn't have a car. Uh, I was using the car to go for a little while, you know, to try to get that to Old Town from here. Um, and then it became an issue of even parking at Old Town was an issue, um, to try to get on the bus. So when I heard that they were going to extend the, uh, trolley, uh, obviously, I was really excited about that. I'm not at UCSD anymore, but, um, just to sort of echo that, it's that last mile problem, I think, that we're still dealing with, even if you connect the airport, um, it's just not really practical to ask somebody on an eight and a half hour workday than to add another hour and a half in either direction. Um, so just, just wanted to say that in that light blue area of influence, I think we're still going to end up seeing some of the same problems regardless of, uh, if the central hubs are connected to each other. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, by the way.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
I think I've got my.
Yep.
Um, my, my main question was answered, um, but I wanted to throw in there for the planners to consider that, uh, these mobility improvements come with a catch, and that usually means state and local incentives for builders to add additional density, uh, remove parking, things like that, that really, um, transform. I'll be, I'll be, um, I'll, I'll say that nicely, transform neighborhoods, um, around them. And so just be, be aware of that. I, I, I guess is all that, uh, I wanted to mention. It's not just a simple matter of adding transportation options. You, 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 um, you lose the neighborhood as you know it, so.
Well, they already.
All right, thank you, guys. Um, so like Gio said, it's not, either next month or the month after they'll start the public process. You guys can give your feedback. It sounds like it's going to be one of those things that we saw, like the stormwater, uh, or if you took the food survey that I sent out where that you'll rank the choices of what you want to see and and so that you can continue that on. And of course, send that out to everyone, and then we'll hopefully, once that CMCP study is done, we'll have you guys back and we can talk more transportation then. And we'll have certainly a clearer picture of, you know, where this hub is going to go. Uh, thank you, Gio, for your time before.
Of course.
More things. Right, wonderful. Thanks, guys.
Yes.
All right, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
I, it's just. I will put my information in the chat as well, so if you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Oh, awesome. Okay, so we're wrapping up here. Um, I do have a couple of announcements. Uh, as promised, I'll start with complete communities first, because that one's a little bit longer than everything. Uh, so here is the updated fact sheets for, uh, complete communities that involves housing solutions, mobility hubs, and play everywhere. The big things to note in the changes that have been made is the FAR for Ocean Beach has been dropped to 2.5, and it actually only exists now west. It will only increase west of Sunset Cliffs. Uh, so everyone who lives between the water and Sunset Cliffs, that's where the FAR would increase. They've doubled the affordability incentive, uh, so you would have to provide more affordable units to get the density bonus. However, it is still based on the base zoning, uh, not how many units you will ultimately provide still on how many units prior to the density bonus you're getting. That's where that percentage will come from. Uh, it is, but it is still, it's now included on site. So there are some things, you know, that we did request that have been changed. There's also some things that haven't been requested, uh, so, uh, everyone, please either write or phone in your comments on the ninth uh, for complete communities. And then the next public meeting you'll want to go to for city council will be coming up in December. Uh, that will be for the short-term vacation rental. Uh, that ordinance and that draft language is still, uh, in motion, and we will hear more about what the language will look at, like, at that land use and housing meeting. And then, um, and then from there, an ordinance would come in front of council and between land use and housing and before that ordinance comes is probably when we would want to talk about short-term, um, vacation rentals and what we want to see out of an ordinance again. So keep your eyes on that. Uh, DSD is also going entirely online. Uh, so all notices for future projects are going to be through email. So you should be seeing an email from DSD in the upcoming weeks about signing up. And you can sign up, uh, planning group by planning group. So if you also want to sign up for other planning groups' development notices, you can do that too. So please keep your eyes out for that. Uh, I did get an update on the right-hand turn lane coming from Nimitz, uh, onto West Point Loma Boulevard. The, unfortunately, even though that land is completely unusable and inaccessible, it's still technically the Parks Department, so we can't expand the roadway. However, there is a plan, um, it's actually one of Sandag's proposed projects to connect a cycle track all the way around Rob Field and Dusty Roads. So once that would be completed, then we can convert that, uh, part of the bike lane into a designated right-hand turn lane. So that, I think, and Nicole and I were talking about this, Virgus, I think that Sandag project, she said 48 or 49, and they're currently on number 22. So that is in motion. We'll keep an eye on that and make sure, you know, once we get a new cycle track, we pursue that further. Um, and those, those are my chair updates. Thanks, you guys. Uh, I'm going to go, Kevin, and then Tracy, can you give her secretary updates? And I know you have an update about public outreach as well.
Um, I don't really have any updates per se. I was curious if the CPC, uh, took any actions or recommendations on the complete communities that was on agenda?
Just that it, it gets delayed before hearing council, so pretty much just, you know, more opposition. I did just remember thing, December, we will be talking about Mariners Cove and that development. Um, I wanted to make sure, to give enough time on the agenda, and I knew parking would take a long time, and I think Mariners Cove is going to take a long time, so I didn't want them to be on the same agenda. But that is what we'll be discussing in December.
Okay, thanks. I don't have a report.
Hi, everyone. Um, uh, I just wanted to let you guys know that there is an intention to have what the town council is calling a reverse parade this year, where all of the floats will be stationary and people will be driving by us. So think like, uh, Delmar Racetrack Festival of Lights kind of situation. Um, so to be prepared for that, because I'm, I'm saying prepared, because they have not gotten their permits or permission to do this yet. Um, to be prepared for that, if it does come up, we are going to have an outreach, uh, meeting on the 16th and come up with ideas for our stationary float. Um, I've already reached out to a few of you to see if you were available to help build, um, because we rely very heavily on our builders in the group. Um, but if anyone has any really great ideas, I would totally appreciate your input, um, either at the meeting, or if you want to just shoot me an email, that would be really great too. Um, and then we'll, we'll, if this is a do, a go, we will go ahead and present the ideas at the November meeting, and then we'll do the whole deal where we schedule, you know, when we're going to build it and the whole, the whole deal, like we've been doing the last few years. Um, other than that, there is a transportation subcommittee meeting on the 23rd of this month. And I have no idea what we're going to put on the agenda yet, but we will put some cool stuff on there. So, uh, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Uh, awesome. Do we have any other subcommittee reports? Forestry, Historical Society. Okay, Kevin, you want to? Um, Anthony?
Yeah, I'll go for Anthony. I guess I, I kind of threw this at him, because he chairs our ad hoc, uh, short-term rental committee. Um, I know the board had made previously a motion that sort of was contingent on a few things, one of which was the mayoral election, uh, which now looks to be pretty settled. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't take another stab at that, knowing that, uh, Campbell's office is going to go forward with this. Um, should the board try to take a, a position that directly addresses her proposal? Um, assuming that it's, you know, it, it looks like it's going forward, so I hate to be left out, uh, on that.
Uh, yeah, in fact, uh, well, what I could do is, um, I'll send an email out to all the, uh, commit, subcommittee members uh, to see if there'd be a optimal date that we could maybe do a kickoff, a, a resurrection meeting. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me. I, I think, uh, some of them got scared off, but.
Hey, me too.
Well, it, it, the process got sort of hijacked, because Campbell's office came up with that proposal and it sort of, you know, interrupted our, our path, so I, you know, I think it's totally understandable what happened.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we certainly don't want to be left out, and we want to make sure we have a, a good, uh, communicate, communications.
They ignore us anyways, but.
Thank you all, everyone. Sorry, I know, um, we're supposed to be gender neutral. Uh, thanks, everyone, for coming the day after the election, uh, you know, and, and hanging in there. I got us, oh, you know, almost right on time, just 11 minutes over. Uh, so take care, have a, have a good, happy, calm evening, and I wish everyone the best. And I, I hope to see everyone out soon. Stay safe. You know, the cases are increasing and, and like, I think Michaela said, we might, we have one week to prove that we shouldn't go on the naughty list, so everyone stay safe. Um, and I'll see you guys soon, hopefully.
Thanks, Andrea.
Everybody. Stay healthy, stay safe.
Bye.